do with our houses and families is we have an assembly every month. And so the first thing we do is meet in the gym. But it's not as easy as it sounds. So we rely on our fourth graders to go down first and get the houses organized. So we have our blue house, our red house, our green house, our yellow house, and our purple house. And then as they're organized, the kids are called down by houses to gather in the gym in an area where they're all together. So when you get down there, you have, you know, a sea of green, a sea of blue, a sea of red and yellow. And as they're walking down, they're all going, yes, we're in the yellow house. We are so cool. Or something like that. But they're very excited to identify with a certain color. Once we're all there, we are able to talk about Cheetah Paws and the good work that we've done following expectations. And then we learn more about the focus for the next month. So each month we have a different focus. And Mrs. Lassar is going to talk a little bit more about that.
Hi. So when the families get together, there are activities for the monthly theme. October's focus is kindness and confidence. Our families get together or got together. And the question that was presented for discussion was, what is something kind that you can do this month? And family members shared examples, and then they were asked to write these things down, just different examples of what they could do to show kindness. And not only does kindness help build confidence, but our older students help build the confidence within the younger students by helping them with these different activities. And that is turns around and helps build their own confidence as well. I'm going to turn it over to some of our fourth graders.
One thing I love about our families at Cherokee. One thing I love about our families at Cherokee is meeting new people, especially the new kindergarteners.
One thing I love about the families are meeting new people and helping the kindergarteners out.
Families can make new relationships and make new friends in other classes or other grades.
I think the families idea at Cherokee is great, not only because it helps other kids from other grades get to know each other, but to also bond with kids you might have never known at all.
I like that it brings all grades together and the kindergartners get to know the older kids, and it also grows bonds with teachers that you not really get to know.
Seeing the kindergarteners laugh makes me laugh. It makes me happy. And seeing the and seeing the grades combined and meeting new people makes me even happier.
I've been helping a kindergarten by walking it back to its class.
There are all grades in our families, and you get to know all sorts of people. Now, when I see my school family members, I can say hi to them and wait.
When I was in second grade, I wanted to be a leader like the fourth graders. Now I am one, and I love to be a leader.
The families are building my leadership skills the younger students look up to.
The the families will help the ki- the kindergarteners to make new friends and also help the kid that's going to learn the new teachers. And it also helps the kindergarteners and first graders to know the building around.
So as you've heard from our fourth graders, our our houses, we have five houses. And then with in every house, we have families and every teacher is assigned a family. And they have students from kindergarten through fourth grade in every family. So the goal then is that a child, when they come in kindergarten, they will stay with that same teacher and that same family throughout their career here at Cherokee. So our fourth graders have had the opportunity to get to know kindergarteners, first, second graders that they may never know in their time here in the building. And it has been really fun to see them walking in the halls, passing each other out on the playground, saying hi to one another and building relationships with students that they may not have had the opportunity to had we not had this assessment in place. So we are really excited to see where this goes in the coming years and think really is another way for us truly to build that sense of community and sense of belonging for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could we ask everybody from Cherokee to come forward for a photo? You would all just stand in front of us? A minute. Okay, thanks, everybody. That was a great spotlight by Cherokee Elementary and their fourth graders. Our president of the school board, Annie Helms, is not here this evening. And so as vice president, I will read her president's report. So these are Annie's words that I'm sharing with you this evening. My mother always said that the school year really gets chugging when we get to Halloween, and we are nearly there. While we always have a lot going on at the board level, a major point of focus in the past month has been on implementation of our strategic plan. This is where the rubber meets the road in terms of making the strategic plan a living document rather than a set of aspirational goals. Together, we are developing solid metrics and timelines designed to measure student progress and help keep us on track. I have to commend my fellow board members for the thoughtful and rigorous feedback they have given to the administration in this process. And I also have to commend the administration, which has been open to and thoughtful about the feedback they've received. We hope to share more details with the community soon and are confident that we will end up with a solid plan focused on improving student outcomes across the board. There are so many other things happening right now. I know Matt is going to touch on a recent Grateful Market event, but on behalf of the board, I also want to thank everyone who helped plan, volunteer, donate, or participate in this year's event. What a wonderful and important way to involve our community in service. Last week, I attended my first community coffee at Gorton Center. While the attendance could have been better, it was an honest attempt to do more to connect our board with our community and hopefully sent the message that we are on board and are happy to meet with and learn from our fellow community members anytime. We welcome feedback as to the best time and place for these conversations so that we can continue to connect with each other. Looking ahead, several of our board members will be attending the III joint annual conference in early November. It will be my first conference, and I look forward to the opportunity to connect with and learn from other board members and administrators from across the state of Illinois. Finally, looking to December, we will be engaging in a board retreat designed to focus our efforts on our most important goal, improving outcomes for all students in District 67. As always, the board welcomes your questions, feedback, and comments. You can email us through the District 67 website, attend our next community coffee, or join us at a meeting to let us know what you think. Many thanks, and now I will turn it over to Dr. Montgomery for his superintendent's report.
Thanks, Alice, and thanks to Annie for preparing those statements for us. Tonight's superintendent's report is going to be covering four topics. One, Alice shared, which is just a celebration on the Grateful Market. I'm going to touch quickly on the metrics. We're going to talk more about that in November, and I'll tell you a little bit of that in a moment. When the report card is coming out from ISB, and then announcing a new Let's Talk series that I'm really excited about will be number three. Starting with the metrics, tonight in workshop, the board has had a continued conversation from September, and we continue to refine the metrics of the five-year strategic plan. And we are committed to releasing metrics annually to track our progress through that five-year plan. We will be postponing the report tonight and likely tabling the vote and be talking more about these at the November meeting. And I want to thank the board for their robust involvement in this process, and I am confident that the feedback that we've had with every conversation will ensure that the document that we share around these metrics is something the community can be proud of. Moving on to the ISB report card, I am excited to share that this coming Monday on October 30th, the report cards will be released for all districts. So we will have reports coming out for 67 and 115, as well as the rest of districts in the state. And we will be sharing the hopefully news that we can be really proud of, of the work we did last school year, and will fit into where we're headed in years to come. Talking about the Let's Talk, those of you who have been with us for a while know that during the pandemic, we started a series called Let's Talk, and it was on hot topic issues to engage with the community around things that are very interesting to them. This year, we're modifying a little bit, and we're going to do a series. So we're doing a series on artificial intelligence. It will run through the school year, and we will start at the, oh, my gosh, I almost forgot, are we starting at the school level or are we starting at the workforce? So we're starting with workforce, forgive me, and then we're moving to the collegiate level, and then we're moving into the K-12 arena, and we'll finish our discussion with so what, now what, on how AI is impacting the educational processes and, of course, how it's impacting our daily lives in a big, in a major way. So I'm excited about this. It's a variation on a theme, but we're going to invite community experts. Hopefully, people who are in the workforce, who are immersed in AI every day in their day job, and then invite people from the collegiate environment to also talk about how it's impacting universities and colleges. And then we'll chase it with how it's impacting from our teaching and our staff faculty, and then see what happens next in this rapidly changing environment around AI. Here are the dates, December 4th, January 23rd, February 21st, and March 7th. And we'll be releasing this in communications to the community. And we will also be offering a comp, a course that will be complementing the series. So if you want to engage, there is a course that you can take solely on AI to increase your individual mastery and hopefully elevate the conversation that we have. So by the end of this, when we talk about how we're going to, how, what does it mean for us in a K-12 arena, we will have the people who were part of the series to have really working knowledge of AI, and hopefully we can garner some great feedback from that group. Moving on to the last topic, which is the Grateful Market. Every year, this has been a huge success that we've done this, and this year was, did not disappoint with 4,200 pounds of food distribute or distributed with 80 volunteers. You can see on the slide that we also suppressed that fundraising goal for us, and we want to thank our partnership with the community and Quest Food Management because they come to the rescue and are excited to join arms with us as we rally at Beacon Place every October. That concludes my superintendent's report, and thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you so much. Now we have time for public participation. The board will now hear public comments subject to Board Policy 2-230. The Lake Forest Boards of Education welcome public attendance and participation at all meetings. It is hoped that by utilizing these guidelines, participation will be maximized, both in terms of fairness and organization. At this point in the evening's agenda, this opportunity for public comment will be limited to comments about this meeting's agenda items only. Please hold all other comments until the following opportunity for public comment later during tonight's meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll continue on to board reports, starting with strategic plan metrics. Dr. McHugh.
Yeah, we are going to push that to the November meeting, given the changes that happened in workshop, and we'll move to Dr. Shannon this time.
Thank you. Next up, assessment update, Dr. Michelle Shin.
So thank you for this opportunity tonight. I, it's always great to get up and just talk about the things that we're doing in our district related to assessment. And had an opportunity last week to present to the education committee, and I hope that I can invite the board and the community on a journey this year to really and truly understand all that we do related to assessment and how that information gets trickled down from the state level to our leaders, our district level, to our schools, and into the hands of our teachers so that truly what we're looking at is making things better for our kids in our schools. So I come tonight with an update. I think one of the things that we chatted about last year a little bit is being able to provide data in real time. So as data come in, we're always responding to things throughout the school year, but our traditional method got a little messed up during COVID, which was kind of a nice surprise. Rather than having a one big report of all the data from the previous year, I'm going to share some of the data that came in in the spring that hasn't been updated and give you a preview of our state report card and just kind of outline the types of assessments that we use for you in anticipation that the school report card will be out on Monday and everything will be publicly available. So an overview, as I said, the Illinois School Report Card preview. I know everyone would love to know what the scores look like now. We've had an opportunity to be in the portal and make sure that all of the data are accurate, but they're embargoed until Monday, so I'll share a little bit. All of the parents should have received your IAR scores, and if you took the science assessment in fifth or eighth grade last year, you should have those reports as well. So we've, we've had those reports released from the state for several months and sent those out. So I want to talk a little bit about how we review data, how does it get from the top to the bottom, and then share results from spring from our measures of academic progress and our FastBridge learning from this fall. So is that the right one? No. Did I go too far? Tiana, what's missing? I'm going forward. Okay, well, which button? Backward, backward, that button's the wrong. See, I knew I would mess it up, Dr. Montgomery. Push this one backward. There you go. I think so. It's a three. Okay, I was like, wow, my slides really changed since I, I worked on this. So forget all of that. Okay. All right. I, I know. So there are only two buttons, and clearly I needed to clarify that, and I did mess it up. So I am now going to push the white button to go forward, correct? Okay, one button at a time. All right, so I've categorized the assessments that we have in our state required assessments. These are assessments that ISB requires us to give. We don't have an option. We give these every year, and that includes our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, which is given to students in grades three through eight. And I've just listed in this just some of the questions that we answer based on the data that come in. The purpose of the data that we collect is also, we design it, we, we look at things through the lens of questions. What do we want to know? And what assessment data are we going to refer to in order to get that information? So this is really, the IAR is about progression towards state standards in ELA and math in both, and meeting the growth targets established by the state of Illinois for various groups in ELA and math. The science assessment, the comprehensive school climate survey, the state does require a climate survey every year. We use the CSCI to do that. And the access testing for all of our students that are identified for multilingual services within the district. So all of these assessments are utilized and included in our annual state report card. So when that comes out next week, you will see results for, I believe, the top three. Access is not in the school report card, but it's used as a calculation for our overall index score. So all of these results are used to calculate our summative designation. So when you land on the school report card page, which will be available, this is the district page right now, you have each of these areas listed under academic progress. So just to orient people, this hasn't changed from last year, but overall IAR for the district, proficiency, which is the percent of students meeting or exceeding in EL math, ELA, math and science growth, and then our participation rate in the school climate survey. One thing I would do want to point out with our science assessment this year, they did actually use the student scores this year to calculate proficiency, whereas last year they only included the percentage of kids that actually took the test. So the comparison from year to year is not, it's apples to oranges when you look at the numbers. So just wanted to point that out. When you go to a district or a school page, the landing page is still the same. You would click on academic progress, and you'll be able to see the information for individual schools when they're available on Monday. So the school report card, we're really looking at three large buckets of metrics that the state looks at. One is proficiency, which I will share some information tonight. It's the percentage of our students that meet or exceed standards in ELA, math, and science. It also, there's a small portion of that that looks at the progress that our multilingual students make in a five-year period of time. Right now, that indicator is not included in our state report card calculation because we don't have a population large enough in one language to have that be an area, but it's something that we definitely track because we've got about 70 students in the district right now representing 26 languages. So it's a growing population. The growth, so that, I'm going back, the proficiency accounts for 25% of our report card. So the state takes all of our information and they assign them weights, and percentage of students meeting or exceeding combined math in ELA is 25%. And growth is our student growth compared to academic peers who started at the same level. So a student in the same grade, subject and test score the previous years, they're matched up, and they look at student growth. This accounts for half of our report card. So growth is super important. The challenge is for us is it tells us whether student growth was above or below the state average, which is the 50th percentile, but it doesn't tell us how much growth. So this is kind of a target that we're really trying to wrap our heads around because it does account for so much of our report card in terms of being ahead of this and better understanding where students are at right now in order to prevent kind of the after we find out after that we need to take some, make some changes. We do know that a score over the 50th percentile is higher than average growth. So I know there are questions when we look at some of these percentile ranks or numbers and say, well, 50% is, is half, that, or 50th percentile is, is not great. So just want to provide that context so you understand how those scores are calculated. And definitely, so higher than average growth, if our growth rate is above 50, the 50th percentile, then we're at least growing in the right direction. 25% of that report card is our school climate survey, and a big portion of that, 20% of that, is our chronic absenteeism. So the state is really looking at the number of days that students are absent, and that includes excused and unexcused. So if you're not in a seat, regardless of where you are, you could be traveling, you could be at a sporting event, those are counted toward absences. So we have about 17 and a half days a year for students. So because of the proportion of our report card that's allocated to this, we're starting, we've to do some preventative work this year so that we find ourselves in a more proactive stance with taking care of that. So these are data that are from 2023, the percentage of students whom we do exceed in ELA and math. I don't even want to push a button to see if there's a light. Is there a light, Tiana? Or is it just an off button? Okay, there's no pointer. I don't want to push a button and have myself turn everything off. So ELA and math, the grade level bands, so they report in the grades for three, four, five, six, which is Deer Path East, and seven, eight, which is the West Campus. The percentage of students meeting or exceeding in the middle column from 2022, the percentages are there, and the percentages for 2023 are in green because they all went up. So positive growth for the number of kids meeting or exceeding. So again, we've got some scores that we, areas and for growth, we're not done with this, but it's definitely a step in the right direction, given just the concerted efforts that we made last year to focus on some clear instructional support. And I look forward to seeing the results this year after our first year of the Amplify. You will notice, too, with math, this is our, this was, we're now in our second year of illustrative, so last year we did have a new math curriculum in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So our math scores are definitely on pace and continuing to go up. So you'll have to wait for the rest of the information until.
I think Carl had a question.
Carl.
Dr. Shin, could you quickly describe, okay, what 61%, 55%, 46% really means? I mean, it's not like that's the score they got on a test that means something else entirely.
Correct. So we take the number of kids who meet or exceed, the number is a count, and you divide that by the school enrollment that took the test, and that gives you the percentage of the students that met or exceeded on that, in that, their combined grade bands, we can look at them, I don't know if we can get it, we could look at it disaggregated as well. We have some of that information, but on the state report card, it's aggregated. So those are the percentage of kids who met or exceeded on that test within that grade band. So it's not a percentile rank. This is actually the number of kids divided by the number who took the test.
Next week, we'll be able to show you rankings and show you percentiles.
Right, and growth and the summative designation, so.
Megan, just have a quick question on the format of the test. I know that the SAT and they're changing their format. Is this test, is everybody taking the exact same test? Or if they get a question right, they get one question? If they get a question wrong, they get a different question?
It is not, so I think what you're describing is the computer adaptive test that we use with MAP, which does work that way where students, the harder the test gets, that they get, they continue to get answers correct, it will continue to work up the continuum. The IAR is not, students will get different questions for those items. They don't all get the same question at the exact time, but it does not adapt to student input that way. Okay, just wanted to make sure I was all right on track. So in addition to the state required assessments, we do a lot throughout the school year. Our measures of academic progress, which are our MAP scores that we give in the winter and the spring for students in grades two through eight, looking at how growth is, how students are growing throughout the school year as well as across school year. So I'll share the spring to spring data because we do not test our students in the fall each year, so I don't have any data from this fall to compare. And then we have FastBridge, FastBridge learning measures in reading and math, as well as our social, emotional, academic behavior rating scale. These are really designed to be indicators of overall health in basic skills. They're not as instructionally diagnostic as some of the other things we get, but a quick and efficient way for us to take the pulse on some foundational skills in our grades K through five. So we do this every, we assess every fall, winter, and spring in grades K through five. We also use this as a progress monitoring tool for students who are receiving intervention support. So it's a handy assessment measure for us in multiple ways. So the district level assessments are given during the school year. We're looking at the overall health of the core curriculum. So Monica, I did change the picture in the slide to indicate it's more of a thermometer. But how did I, where's the, sorry, I'm going the wrong way again. I'll have to practice for the next time I get up here. Sorry, everyone. It's what? It's more entertaining for you, sorry. So the FastBridge mothers, measures work like a thermometer. So if you think about when you go to the doctor, there are some simple things that they do every time you come in, regardless of what's wrong with you, to give them a sense of where they might need to go for problem solving. So you get an overall number. If you know if you have a fever of 103, that you probably have an infection. If it's lower than that, you might not be in there. So it's a general screener, and we do a lot more work underneath that to support it. So I want to segue into the processes that we use for sharing information and utilizing that. You mentioned the five-year strategic plan, which is, we're anxiously awaiting the metrics as well. So we've already begun some problem solving based on, at least we know where the areas are in the strategic plan. So our school buildings take that, will take those metrics, and every year they create an annual school improvement plan. So each of the buildings have three school-level goals that are aligned with the strategic plan, and their goals each year are designed based on, there's a five-year metric, and where's their current baseline, and they're going to have to look at that progress across time to come up with an annual goal. And we monitor progress throughout the year, provide those updates for the board. I will be sharing all of the school improvement plans this week in the Friday update, as well as a description of our, the process. So you will have those at your hands at the end of the week, and then we'll publicly post them on our district website. And this process cycles every year. So we've been doing this. So our job at the district level is really leadership-wise to look at trends and areas for growth at the district level, and we release that information to our school leadership to do the same within their school buildings. So buildings are all at different places in some of these metrics, so they pick and choose based on where the greatest areas of need are for their individual buildings. At the school level, we have a process for problem solving and monitoring progress that begins with, number one in the middle is reviewing the data. So we've got our IR state data that a lot of that has been spent, we dug into that this summer with our administrative teams, and they work with their building leadership teams. And then we take the other information from FastBridge and MAP and try to discern it down into, starting with our grade level teams, specialists, coaches, administrators. We have data review meetings. We have data review meetings, typically in the fall, winter, spring, and then we have periodic updates in between that. But we have a full team of people looking at the data. Our first job is to identify discrepancies between expected and actual performance in, for groups of students and for individual students. So where are the biggest gaps, and what do we need to do about it? Analyzing that performance, so we might do further assessment with some students, we might do further digging within the standards, and we just, we identify areas for intervention to try to close that gap between what is expected for them and what is occurring. We set group and individual goals, we monitor progress. The monitoring progress frequency is based on the level of support. So for our grade-level teams, a lot of that is done monthly, as they get data that is coming in from their particular units, that their, or their instructional units. And for students that might be in intervention, we're monitoring as frequently as weekly. So that frequency is based on student need. We analyze that, and we adjust based on what students are doing. So we do that at the grade level. At the middle school, we do that within departments. So all of the data that have been shared so far, all of our teams have been able to look at that in multiple ways and have started aligning instructional support based on areas of need and our standards that we're expected to cover for the state. So measures of academic progress, I feel like I'm jumping a little bit, but what are they? Many of you, if you don't recognize this report, then, I haven't sent you your scores for several years, but this is an individual student report, this is the most common one that our parents get in terms of looking at student performance compared to their grade level and the district level and their growth over time. It's a nationally-normed test, as I was answering Megan's question, it's a computer adaptive test. So the difficulty of this test is not, is not sitting at a grade level, it's sitting with the items. So it allows us to use a ruler that we can use across grade levels for students, and the ruler doesn't change, that the more they answer difficult questions, it's going to continue to move them up the continuum with harder questions, and if kids are struggling with a question, it's going to adjust down. So it allows us to look at growth over time, at any time with our students. So we look at growth and proficiency, the teachers use these data throughout the year to adjust instruction, and the grade-level growth data are used by the district-level leadership to look at instructional changes at our district level. So this is an individual student report. These data are the growth data from spring of 2022 to the spring of 2023. You'll notice that the column for second grade is missing because we don't have a fall, or a spring test for them from first grade, there's not a growth period for them, so those scores for third grade are the end-of-year second-grade scores, and that is their third-grade year. So these are intact cohorts, if that makes sense to folk. So the observed growth is that lavender bar, and the grade-level norms, the projected growth for that grade level is the orange diamond. So we have all of our grades except our eighth grade in reading. This test is only reading, it's not writing and reading, so this is a little bit of a difference from our ELA with IAR. One of the things I want to point out, I don't know if you can see here, but we have G5 percentiles here, which is, many of our, about the 8th percentile, 80th percentile or higher, but when you look at our national percentile for growth, this is an indicator of how we're comparing nationally, so our growth measures tend to be a little bit more in line with, I don't know that I like that, but tend to be more in line with what we're seeing with our IAR. Again, the ELA growth in eighth grade was not as, as we expected, so we've definitely been aware of this and are addressing those things. Math, a little bit of a different picture for math, again, same bars, the growth, our fourth grade, just missed it, our fifth grade had a large gap, we're aware of this as well. When we look at our fifth graders in particular, and even that eighth-grade group, these are groups that had significant changes during COVID in instruction as well, but we, again, see the trend with our spring scores, that our achievement percentile tends to be high relative to national comparisons, but our national growth percentile is varied quite a bit. So again, we'll be looking at this as well. So growth is definitely an area that will be a focus this year, if we can, part of the challenge is trying to predict how we can actually find the variables that we can change and work on and intervene with in the district to be more intentional about our work with our grade levels. Fast bridge learning, there it is, that's, does that help, Monica? It's very clear at this point that that's a picture of a thermometer, okay. Again, overall health, I've got, I think I've gone through all of these things for universal screening, so I just want to give you a snapshot of what this looks like throughout the year in the building. So universal screening, what you're seeing here is a third-grade graphic, the vertical axis is the fall of 2022 on the bottom and the fall of 2023 at the top. The reason I give a comparison is that, one of the nice things about doing this is we get a different group of kids every year in these grades, so it's not expected to be the same across, across grade levels, especially in the fall, when students are being assessed on, on stuff that's at third grade and they just started third grade. But this allows us to get an idea of how we need to start allocating resources within our buildings in particular areas. So the 85th to the 99th percentile is blue, so 25% of our kids last year were in that band, 29% were this year in this grade level. The 30th to the 84th percentile in green, comparable percentages at that point. And then you'll notice in our, the yellow and the red ranges, or the students below the 30th percentile and the 20th percentile, that you'll see differences. So last year, we had roughly 18% of our kids starting in third grade that needed additional support, this year, we're looking at about 12%. So this is going to change every year, what, I will paint the picture of what does this look like during the year. So you should start to see some of these ranges decrease and increase as our students are receiving instruction. Same graphic for math, but this is a second-grade math chart. I picked this one because you see that there's not a whole lot of difference from last year to this year with our entering second graders. Again, we've got some work cut out for us, with roughly almost 40% of our kids entering second grade, these are math concepts and applications, so some basic math facts as well as applications. So not uncommon, this is the first year they take this assessment, so I hope to see those red and yellow bars decrease over time. The other piece of this are the SABR's data, and this is the last piece I want to share with you, is we, three times a year, utilize this screener for social-emotional risk levels, and it includes an academic question, a behavioral question. What's the third one? Why am I mixing academic, behavioral, social? In K4, the survey is completed by the teachers, so the ratings in K4 indicate teachers' overall observations of students, in 5-8, the students complete it. So you'll notice the low-risk bar is green, so 88.4% at our elementary, and 95% of our kids at the middle school are rated right now in the low-risk range. It's a little larger at the elementary level with some risk and high risk, about 10% of those kids. So once we see these data, this is part of our process for reviewing what we call red flag indicators, so are there various indicators throughout the school, this being one of them that we may need to follow up if we don't already have students on our radar. We do this in collaboration with parents, so these scores go home, and if we have concerns or parents have concerns, we invite the conversations at school on how to support our kids. And our middle schoolers, 5.5%, were within the high-risk and the low-risk ranges, starting in the, in the fall. So we're looking at overall health at above 85%, and we're there right now, so hopefully this will continue throughout the year. That's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions that I can answer for the board?
Any questions for Dr. Shen?
One question is for the state-mandated tests that go into the report card that we're going to see next week. I'm interested in your thoughts on whether or not you think those tests are an accurate, reliable assessment of student proficiency, student achievement, student growth?
That's a very good question, Mr. Remus. What I do know from a historic level, being in this district for 20 years and going through the different state assessments, when I first started in the district, the Illinois test, I think you could take it without instructing kids. It was easy enough to, you could answer questions without even having background knowledge. So throughout the years, it has gotten much more rigorous, and it is very much aligned to the standards that we're being held accountable in our schools. So I don't know that I love the test, or it's the best thing for us all the time, but it does give us quite a bit of information about how we're doing towards standards, which is guiding a lot of the work in our teaching and learning department right now, that our teachers understand what needs to be taught, and when it needs to be taught, and what we need to cover. And I think that historically has not been, when our test scores, when the test was easier, it was a little bit easier with our scores. So I think, I do think it's a rigorous test for our kids. Does it accurately measure everything? You know, there's a lot of variables to that, that's why we rely on measures throughout the school year to help us get a sense of, you know, triangulating data with our students.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. I will see you next month, I think, to talk about the report card. So I think, hopefully, everyone will be pleased with what you see when it comes out next week. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, committee reports. Finance and Operations Committee, Carl?
Thank you. It's going to be hard to follow Dr. Shen and her stellar presentation, it would be much shorter than that. So the Finance and Ops Committee met on Thursday morning, October 12th. We discussed two items on tonight's agenda, the Cherokee Furniture and Wintrust Banking Agreement. We also dove into the year-end actuels, the major minor levers impacting the budget and the levy, as well as a quick review of the construction program, and we're going to get in more detail of that at the next meeting. I really highly recommend everybody read the full report attached to the agenda, there's a lot of information in there about the budget and levy, it's a great 101 in how the levy is put together and what's put into that. Just as a scheduling note, we canceled the November 2nd meeting because that's next week, and it was so close to this Board of Ed meeting, and it would be, it's just kind of too compressed there. So our next scheduled meeting is Thursday morning, November 30th, at 7:30 a.m., right here in the boardroom. So unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Carl? Seeing no questions, thank you, Carl. Liaison reports, starting with True North Educational Cooperative 804, Emily and Megan.
I really don't have a lot to add, Alice. I have the board brief from the superintendent attached to our report. I mean, it's a really excellent summary, high level of what was discussed at the meeting. I'll just, just when the next meeting is, and that's actually November 15th, at 7:00 p.m., and certainly, if there's any questions, concerns, or comments, I'm happy to field them.
Emily, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the Spirit of 67 Foundation. Megan, please.
Thank you. So September was a successful month for the Spirit of 67. They were very excited to have voted and approved the administration's DPM cafeteria grant for $308,000. Since the vote in early September, the furniture has been ordered, and everyone is hopeful that Phase 1 cafeteria upgrade will be on time for December of this year. The Home and Garden Tour on September 28th was an absolute success, not only did they have more attendees this year, but they raised more money with thanks to all of the sponsors, communities, stakeholders, local businesses, volunteers, and all of the hard work of the entire committee and their three co-chairs, Lexi Rascia, Gisela Orestano, and Noel Dolan. Because of their contributions, they raised $100,000. And they are also excited to announce that the cross-town competition is well on its way. They have more donors to this point in the year than years past, and DPM is already over the 60% threshold, so congratulations to them.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you to the APT, I'm sorry, to the Spirit of 67, sorry about that. Moving on to the APT Board Report, Monica Yun has requested to give a quick verbal update.
Thanks, Alice. The APT celebrated principals last week for Principal Appreciation Week. They sent emails, notes, and chrysanthemums to all the principals to show them gratitude for their leadership. The eighth graders helped out with the Grateful Market that Matt had talked about, they provided toiletries and had a donation to Beacon Place, and that was kind of the kickoff to their community service projects for this year. Looking ahead, on November 15th, Kate Mezner, New York Times bestselling author, will be visiting the elementary schools as part of the Visiting Author Program, which is a longstanding grant from the Spirit. Halloween parties are coming up next week at all the schools. The District 67 Thanksgiving Food Drive will take place next week from October 30th to November 3rd. There's lots of opportunities for parents and students to volunteer, so read your school newsletters on ways to sign up, and see social media in the weekly newsletters for information on what each grade should bring. And the last thing is that the Safety Series continues on November 8th at 9:30 a.m. at Croya. This topic will be active shooting scenarios, which is a really difficult topic, I attended the session last year, it was really informative, though. So it's a, it's a hard topic, but one I encourage people to attend.
Thank you, Monica. Next action items, starting with the approval of furniture purchased not to exceed $30,164 for the Cherokee Edition. May I have a motion to approve the furniture purchase, again, not to exceed $30,164 for the Cherokee Edition?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Approval of Pro Care Therapy for a Long-Term Substitute. May I have a motion to approve the Pro Care Therapy contract for a long-term substitute?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Karar?
Can I ask a question first? So this item didn't come through committee, and I was kind of wondering why it didn't, and if in future items like this, which are a contract item, that they could come through committee.
Will you talk through what it's for and why we went through a contract service?
Sure. So just to give a little bit of context, we needed a long-term sub, we tried to hire through our regular processes, we could not find somebody, we then used the contract agency for this long-term subposition. Matt, did you want to speak to?
Yeah, so, so I think that we need to talk through, if you want this to go through committee, the reason it didn't go through committee from my lens is that this was LBS teacher who was providing services to students with IEPs. If we would not have replaced this, we would have been in violation of the IEPs. So we didn't view it as something that is, something out of the ordinary for Finance and Ops. If we want to talk through that, we absolutely can, and we can work toward making it happen. It's not a deal breaker one way or the other, but that's the rationale behind it.
No, I appreciate that. I think as a service contract, that is, I mean, even though it's a staff person, it still comes down to a service contract, because that's how I would review it, but...
Any other questions?
But I'll vote aye.
Okay.
We have to finish the motion.
So Carl said aye, because he got asked first before the question, so Tiana can finish.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the approval of the resignation of a middle-school French teacher. Any questions before we vote?
You have to read the full language.
Sorry. The board will now consider and vote on Ms. Meredith Martelli's resignation effective October 6, 2023, as discussed in the board's closed session meeting. Any questions?
We have to motion to discuss it, don't we?
Do you have questions, Carl? Okay. Anybody have questions?
If not, may I have a motion to approve the resignation as middle-school French teacher from Ms. Meredith Martelli?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have the approval of strategic plan metrics? I believe we're deferring this tonight, so may I have a motion to defer the strategic plan metrics, please?
Motion to table.
May I have a second motion, or, yeah, may I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, and this is to defer the strategic plan metrics until next month.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
May I have a roll call vote, please, and this is to defer the strategic plan metrics until next month.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of a board member, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which include, number one, approval of Wintrust Banking Agreement, number two, approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, the final June twenty twenty-three and July twenty twenty-three reports, number three, approval of human resources report, which includes hires, leaves of absence, resignations, changes of assignment, stipends, activities, athletics, test prep assignments, number four, minutes of a budget hearing from September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, number five, minutes of an executive session from September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and number six, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Ms. Engelberg?
Yes.
Ms. Levert?
Yes.
Ms. Bernal?
Aye.
Mr. Karar?
Aye.
Ms. Yan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regarding FOIA requests, there were no new FOIA requests. At this time, we have public participation again, the board will now hear a second opportunity for public comment, subject to Board Policy two dot two thirty. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we have announcements. On Thursday, November second, twenty twenty-three, the Finance and Operations Committee will not meet, it has been deferred till the end of November, I believe November thirtieth. On Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty-three, the Education Committee meeting will be here at Lake Forest's West Campus Boardroom at one thirty p.m.
Alice, that date is actually November ninth, is that Thursday?
Oh, thank you. Correction to the announcements, Thursday, November ninth will be the next Education Committee meeting, held here in the boardroom at one thirty p.m., correct? Thank you, Monica, for that clarification. On Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Education for School District Sixty-Seven will meet again here in the boardroom at West Campus at seven p.m., all are welcome. On Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, through Friday, November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, it's Thanksgiving break, there will be no school for students or staff. And then on Thursday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, will be the next Finance and Operations Committee meeting at seven thirty a.m. here on West Campus in the boardroom. Again, all are welcome. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the City of Lake Forest School District Sixty-Seven Board Meeting for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a voice, may I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.